Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the reorganization meeting for the Freehold Regional Board of Education. My name is Sean Boyce, I'm the Board Secretary and Assistant Superintendent for Business. The first order of business is to report out on the official election results of November 5th. In English Town Borough, Elizabeth Canario received 5,167 votes. Farmingdale Borough, Kathy Lavin received 6,398 votes, and write-in candidates 37.
But that wasn't Farmingdale Residence, I want to clarify. That has Howell...
Well, I don't want to say that again.
So it should be noted in a minute. Howell Township, Amy Fankhauser, 4,881 votes. James Trozkowski, 2,680 votes, and 37 write-ins. So based on those results of the election, I would like to swear in the new board members, so Mrs. Canario, Mrs. Lavin, Mrs. Fankhauser, if you could all please stand.
Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, this is me.
Elizabeth Canario.
I always wish I could have one today.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Elizabeth Canario.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
I'll take the roll call now. Mr. Acetola?
Here.
Mr. Bruno?
Present.
Mrs. Canario?
Here.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Here.
Mrs. Lavin?
Here.
Mr. Messinger?
Here.
Mrs. Sutera?
Here.
Mr. Mazik?
Here.
Mr. Moses?
Here.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mark Toscano of the Comegna Law Group, who is going to walk through the required ethics training. Mark?
It's good to see everybody today. In front of you, you will see the packet that we put together for you. At the top is the cover sheet that I would ask that you all please fill out, sign, and return to Mr. Boyce prior to the Board adjournment to executive session. What I'd like to do tonight is to step through with you the requirements of the School Ethics Act. A lot of times, a lot of boards just hand out the School Ethics Act, then all vote on resolutions saying, "We've seen it, we've read it, okay, we're good." I'd like to actually put a little bit of meat to it for you, not that you guys had a bad season, or had problems, but this is a service that we provide, reach the Board of Education, and we work with on a customary and equal basis. So with that in mind, I would just like to put the disclaimer out in front, that this discussion tonight does not replace the individual ethics training that all board members must complete. This does however satisfy the annual school ethics discussions that the Board of Education must have in the republic. And see the next slide, each board must annually discuss the School Ethics Act, code of ethics for board members, policy of doubt policies, and must provide documentation that each member has satisfied these requirements. Without reading through you, exhibit 2 is the code of ethics in the packet, and exhibit 3 is the actual School Ethics Act itself. You all have a hard copy of those statutes and regulations, you have those at your fingertips. This actual PowerPoint is attached to exhibit 1, so if you're having trouble seeing it behind me, you can put a good follow along. Very basically, the purpose of the School Ethics Act is to ensure and protect public confidence, provide statements of guidelines for all of us to follow, and to ensure disciplinary mechanisms to enhance governance standards. If you may recall, last year, for those of you on the board, during public last year, there was some discussion in public session that the Board of Education itself did not take any disciplinary action against one of its own members for conduct that may be a violation of the School Ethics Act. That is solely under the jurisdiction of the School Ethics Commission. So what I'd like to do is walk through with you the 10 tenets and the provisions of the School Ethics Act. And I'm going to give you examples of where some board members ran afoul. These are all actual cases, as incredible as some of this is going to sound, if you think I'm exaggerating, this is all true. So the first one is, "I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, regulations, and state board and court orders pertaining schools. Desired changes shall be brought up only if we have legal procedures." There are no cases of board members violating this provision, because it's basically subexplanatory. You're going to play by the rules if that's what that basically means in straight language. The second tenet, "I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of the children. I will seek to develop the needs of public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of race, ability, creed, sex, or social standing." You'll appreciate this, a board member was found in violation of this provision when they had an interest in a preschool that had a contract with the board and then voted to approve payments to that preschool. Basically, the tenet here is, you're not to be influenced by any outside interests or outside pressures. Number three, this is perhaps the provision where board members run afoul most consistently. Not here in the regional district, I've not seen any of this, any remote evidence of this since we came on board in November 2011, but the vast majority of cases where there is a violation falls under this provision, which says, "I will comply with my board actions to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. And I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them." What this basically means is, you are all the duly elected representatives of your respective constituents. That being said, you only act when you are as a board. No one has more power than the other, you cannot direct, you cannot administer, you cannot act as the administration. That is why you have, among others, Mr. Sampson and Mr. Boyce here, it's their job to administer the district and the board's role to comply in its actions to policy, planning, and appraisal. Here's some illustrations, a charter school member violated the Act when he acted alone to terminate the superintendent without giving notice to all of the board members, such actions didn't take place. Another case, and you might have noticed that some of these are called charter schools, this is not meant to be an accurate charter school system by extension, but it's just that sometimes this is recently more egregious examples. Yet a charter school board president was found to violate the Act and the plan of the sitting in the closed session meeting of the board without providing active notice, and when sure the point made, he sent an email after all board members, who's copied the board secretary, effectively dismissing the board secretary. It was, in addition, that charter school member was also found to violate a number of other provisions because he was signing checks that the board did not allow. Number four, building on number three, "I will carry out my responsibilities, not to interfere in schools, together with my fellow board members to see that they are well run." Again, let the administrators administer the school, board members are to be policy planning and appraisal. Case in points, a board member was found to have violated the Act by ignoring the recommendation of the superintendent and allowing a business administrator to be hired without the superintendent's recommendation, giving orders to the board employees or tasks, having rice notices sent to employees, proposing their termination without consulting the superintendent, and creating positions without the recommendation of the superintendent. Again, these are all true cases. A board member was found to violate the Act for the ask for copies of SAT reports directly from the guidance secretary, inspecting lockers in the boys' locker room, and instructing staff in the supervision students. Again, going outside of policy, planning, and appraisal, going more into administrative function. And then last thing, we had a board member violate the Act by directing the principal to inform other principals that an event was not approved, directing the principal to inform other principals to disregard the directives of the superintendent and assisting the superintendent in refraining from disciplining the principal. Number five, "I will recognize the authority vested by the board, will not make any personal promises, or undertake any private action that may compromise the board." Here, we have some examples, for one, a board member was found to have violated the Act by providing documents to a subject employee which were distributed to the board while addressing the employees to speak to the board. It's also a violation of confidentiality of exception possession, which is another technical discussion to go on. Interestingly, we have one where a board member did not violate the Act by holding a press conference, endorsing the mayor, and making statements that a complaint with the fact to be offensive comes from clearly made as individuals and not as representatives of the board. I include this in order to stress what it provides you, that although you are board members, you all do have rights of free speech outside of board meetings. You don't surrender your rights as individuals, your rights of free speech, when you are not presiding over a meeting or a meeting. A board member violated the Code by having been writing a letter together, intending to speak for the board as a whole, concerning the board business, and criticizing school administrators. If you are going to write a letter together, you cannot, you can identify yourself as a board member, but you must disclaim it if you're not speaking for the board. The Board of Education is not in session, there are two people, two people only who speak for the board, first is the superintendent, second is the board president. Other than that, if we're not in session, individual members cannot speak for the board. Number six, "I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or use the schools for personal gain, the gain of friends." Here we had a board member who was found to violate the Act when on three separate occasions she voted on bill lists that contains payments to the printing firm that was owned by her husband and for which she was an employee. There's a lot of those. If there is a payment to any board member, it's a reimbursement for saying attendance at a conference, it is your responsibility to review the bill list and to note, to extension prior to the board vote. Responsibility falls on board members, and the School Ethics Commission has made it very clear, prior decisions, doesn't have patience for a defense of, "Well, I didn't have time to read the bill list." Number seven, "I will hold confidential all matters pertaining schools which should disclose concerning individuals or the schools, all other matters. I will provide accurate information and, consequently, board members interpret to the staff, the aspirations of the community, and the school." Again, this is maintaining the confidentiality of the information from which you are entrusted. Here we had a board member found to be in violation when she saw and received confidential information about a board member's child in closed session. Seeking the information constituted taking private action, that could compromise the board, and revealing it constituted a failure of the confidentiality of all members. As you know, if we are going to be discussing student matters, generally we do refrain from using the students' names, if that is possible, to maintain student confidentiality to the utmost. Any agreements that may come before the board are redacted to student missions, again, protecting student confidentiality. There was an advisory opinion that a board member would not violate the Act here if they were to send a letter to the editor expressing their opinion about the budget, again, so long as they indicate that it's their opinion, not the opinion of the board. That gets back to, again, what I was talking about before, in terms of, when you're not in session, you can't speak for the board as a whole. Number eight, "I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel in consideration and recommendation of the superintendent or chief school administrator." This does not mean that the board must give a blind check to the administration, must vote yes on every person appointed, however, board must strongly consider the recommendation of the administration when it makes personnel recommendations. Here, just to illustrate that point, a board member was found to have not violated the Act when they voted to re-employ an employee to a former position despite the recommendation of the superintendent not to do so. Again, that's due to the general rule process, and after a Donaldson hearing, which is a much deeper discussion. But the point is, we have to consider strongly the recommendations of the administration, again, it's the administration's job to administrate the school. Number nine, "I will support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties." Here we had a board member violate the Act when he called an employee at home, and became angry when his wife refused to provide him with reports that he was in an animal. And another one, where a charter school member was found to violate control for making derogatory statements regarding a teacher's lesson on the Holocaust at a public board meeting in public. Commission said that she failed to support and protect personnel in the proper performance of their duties. We're going to talk about the proper channels in the next provision, how that should be handled. Another violation, a board member violated the Code by failing to support a staff member by publicly posting confidential information that the staff member was removed from the school and hospitalized for an undisclosed medical condition. Again, that's entrusting the confidentiality and honoring the confidentiality information that you wanted to provide. Number 10, "Proceeding through the proper channels. I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, the superintendent here, and will act on complaints of public meetings only after a failure of administrative solution." Bottom line, if your constituents approach you, email you, or bring concerns to your attention, it is your ethical obligation to bring those concerns to the attention of the superintendent, or him to address initially before the board takes action. Here we had a board member's staff who violated the Act by interrupting schools, taking photographs in the kitchen to support their opposition to the proposed food service contract. A board member had appeared on a television program complaining of the company's management of the cafeterias before taking their complaints to the superintendent. Another board member was found to violate the Act by not providing the superintendent with letters, that he did not like the superintendent's management of issues, raising letters. Instead, the board member went to the administrators to address the issues. Thus, she's circling the superintendent's role in the question. So bright line rules, as best as I can give them to you. If you have a personal involvement, recuse yourself. And you, your members, you may be a family, have a personal involvement, in fact, you create some sort of benefit. All of you know, I hand out the chart that lists all of your relatives, where you have to stay, and I remind you here today, as the resolution is coming up, we'll be distributing that chart again at the next, prior to the next meeting. Personnel appointments, as a relative, you're not allowed to participate, you must recuse yourself. If it is someone that is related to you by marriage, in-law, you will have to talk, because it's a little convoluted. Again, this is more than reference material for you. If it's political involvement, if your campaign happened to be endorsed by, let's say, the teachers' union, if the teachers' union is coming up on a contract here, you could not participate in negotiations, you would have to be recused. How that issue here in the regional, again, just putting that in front of you to get this out of the way. Professional appointments, you are not allowed to participate if you are personally receiving services from that individual, whether it be school physicians, if each school has a homeschool physician assigned. My contract, I would be providing legal services to all you individually, you could not know it on the contract, or if you vote to obtain proof any of the payments. Financial involvement, financial involvement, you must recuse yourself when your immediate family is involved with, my reason is to expect you to repair your objectivity. Bottom line, you have a family member that's doing business in the district, you must recuse, you must have the involvement in discussion, make this way to keep yourself out of any ethical questions. Couple of years back in 2008, the Department of Education has part of the Accountability Regulations passed, mandated ethics schools that dealt with not only employment of immediate family members within the school districts, but also dealt with how that is to be treated in union negotiations, or in education. The regional right now is in a period where we're not in negotiations, but in the upcoming year, which will include the life of this board, we will very likely be entering into negotiations. So, bottom line, I tried to put a chart here, rather than have you try to parse through and figure out, well, what's an immediate family member, what's a relative? It's right here for you as a reference. Bottom line, if you have a relative, again, that's all these people in the right, that is a member of the local board, whether that be the Freehold Regional Educational Association, or the Schools Association, the Athletic Directors, the CCA's, whatever that is, you are not allowed to discuss or participate in any way in negotiations, and in fact, you must leave executive session. If you have an immediate family member that is a member of the same state by unit, for example, NJPSA, NJAA, or you yourself are a member of any of those associations, you cannot discuss or vote on the proposed agreement with that association here in the district, you cannot participate in negotiations in any way, you cannot be present in executive session in a discussion negotiation strategy. However, once a tentative agreement is reached, and there's a memorandum agreement with salary guides, you are allowed to be present, you are allowed to vote on the final application of the contract. And I touched on this, regarding bargaining and endorsements of units, I touched on that earlier, doctrine of necessity, you don't have that problem here. This would be where there would be so many board members that have a conflict, that a majority of the board could not take action. In that instance, the board could pass and implement what is referred to as the doctrine of necessity, whereby all board members would be allowed to participate in part of this conflict. Again, that is a very limited situation, there are no situations like that right now in the region. Indemnification, if any, where you get any ethical issues or jams, the Board of Education must indemnify you and provide a defense. How do ethics affect you, some questions to think about? Again, you all have my email, you can email any questions, and we just open communication. If you ever have a question, ever have a concern, you can give me a call, put me aside at a board meeting, or shoot me an email, I'm here to help you, I'll guide you through this lovely maze. Contact me, if you don't feel comfortable contacting me, you can contact the School Ethics Commission rep. I gave you the number, the website address, you can also phone the teachers' boards, I gave you their numbers, I gave the food service rep, and the extension that the person signed. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Toscano.
No, that's very nice.
The next item is, I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session. Before I do, though, under our new agenda format, which will be improving and polishing and tweaking as we go, but one of the things that you may have noticed is a more robust resolution for executive session. Under the Open Public Meetings Act, there are nine exceptions for issues that may be discussed in executive session, and to the greatest specificity that we are permitted, those items have been listed and will be listed on future agendas. So I will ask for a motion to go into executive session regarding, to discuss the following issues in relation to exception number three, the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report, also student out of district placements. Exception number seven, professional service contract, legal services, and exception number eight, one item employee matter, utilization of long-term leave. So may I have a motion? Motion. Bruno, Mr. Mazik, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We're in exec. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the reorganization meeting for the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education. We started the meeting this evening with reading the results of the recent election, and administering the oath of office to Mrs. Lavin and Mrs. Canario, who were both re-elected, and also administering the oath of office to Mrs. Amy Fankhauser from Howell Township. So, Ms. Fankhauser, welcome to the Board of Education. Mr. Toscano then walked us through an ethics presentation as required, ethics training for Board of Education members, and we do have that on video, so it will be posted on the website for review at your leisure. At this point, I'd like everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press, issue of December 20th, 2013. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notices have been met. The next item of business is the election of President for the Board of Education. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor to the members of the board for any nominations for the office of President of the Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Heshi Moses for the presidency.
Thank you, Mr. Acetola, no second is required.
Second? No second required.
The board is going to instruct that the nominations be closed, and that the board secretary be instructed to cast a unanimous vote to elect Mr. Heshi Moses as President of the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education. Mr. Moses?
I'd like to thank the board, and I promise not to wield my .8 vote like a slideshow. Okay, and now we are opening for Vice President. Do we have any nominations for Vice President?
I'd like to nominate a Mrs. Jennifer Sutera for Vice President.
No second is necessary? Any other nominations?
One procedural misstep, so let's go back a moment. There did need to be a vote for the President of the Board of Education, the nominations were closed. So I do need a motion and a second for Mr. Moses as Board of Education President.
Motion.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, of course.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
I'll abstain because I'm related to the person who's in the board.
Lose yourself.
Yes, okay.
I'll take you with a horse.
Okay, so now we need a motion, there was only one nomination.
Right. Right, we need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Second. Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, we have approval of establishment of time, place, and purpose of meetings. All right, I'll kick it to Mr. Boyce.
At Mr. Moses's request, we're going to, just a note on the agenda, in the opening portion of the Agenda B section, there are several items that are reorganization type items. They are items five through 11 on your agenda, I'll just read them by heading for your reference, approval of establishment of time, place, and purpose of meetings, appointment of board secretary, designation of claims auditor, prepayment authority, designation of qualified purchasing agent, designation of transfer authority, approval of depositories, and adoption of policy manual, and in addition, a number 12, Mr. Moses, one additional reward resolution, and I'll read it into the record, if that's fine. Whereas the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education, the board, has determined that it is necessary to obtain certain professional legal services, the services for the for the operation and efficient administration of the Freehold Regional High School District. And whereas the New Jersey Public School Contracts Law, NJSA 18A-18A-1, provides that boards of education may negotiate and award a contract for professional services without engaging in the public advertisement and formal bidding process to a provider which is authorized by law to practice a recognized profession, which practice is regulated by law, and the performance of which requires knowledge of an advanced type in the field of learning acquired by a prolonged formal course of specialized instruction and study. And whereas Comegno Law Group is a provider of professional services, as such terms are used in the Public School Contracts Law, and specifically the service is sought by the board and is duly qualified and licensed to provide same. And whereas Comegno Law Group previously submitted a proposal to the board in response to a formal request for proposal in connection with the services. And whereas Comegno Law Group has provided services to the board for the past several years, and whereas the board is fully familiar with the services provided by the Comegno Law Group and is satisfied that such services have been performed by Comegno Law Group in an effective and efficient manner. And whereas based upon the foregoing, Comegno Law Group's professional qualifications and experience, it is services, and its services performed for the board, the board is satisfied that Comegno Law Group is able to provide the services required by the board. Now therefore be it resolved by the board as follows. A professional services contract is awarded to Comegno Law Group for the services for the period commencing January 6, 2014, through the 12-month period thereafter at an amount not to exceed $300,000 without further authorization from the board. That was number one. Number two, the Assistant Superintendent for Business Administration is authorized to execute a contract with Comegno Law Group for same. Three, notice of this award shall be published in the official newspapers of the board as required by the Public School Contracts Law. And four, a copy of the contract with Comegno Law Group for the services shall be maintained at the board's offices and available for public inspection. So that lengthy resolution will put as number 12. So items five through 12 are reorganization items. Yeah, I would recommend that.
Okay, I may need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, discussion on any of the items five through 12? Okay, so we'll take them all in one shot.
For rework items number five through number 12, Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazick?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes. Okay, good to see this to communication and to file reports, to the pen report.
Oh, good evening, everyone. By law, we are required to hold our reorganization meeting within a very tight time period at the start of January, so what that results in each year is that we have a December meeting, extended winter break, and then we come right back to another meeting. So have not been in school, everyone knows the weather issues that we've had tonight, notwithstanding some difficulties, but it's been a little bit of a disjointed ride to get back in full swing. I would like to publicly thank the Buildings and Grounds Department over the past week or so. We've had a number of issues around clearing snow, melting ice, the physical labor involved in getting our schools up and running for everyone, and we have the added concern first and foremost of being a very large district with high school students who drive, and you know, so somewhere around 3,000 of our students drive, so there's that added concern when we're making determinations about school closings. I found out that the fastest way to spread word to anyone 18 and under is Twitter, because I put it out on Twitter and literally received 500 retweets of school being closed within the hour, which was fairly staggering if you think about it. But we make every effort, and I'm just alerting to the public, to the process of making a decision on whether or not school is delayed or closed. It's an extensive process. I'd like to thank the administrators from our K-8 districts that send to us, they've been very, very collaborative over the past couple of weeks, they're always collaborative. But there's a whole heck of a lot of discussion, examination, checking of the road conditions, watching, monitoring the weather forecast, and weather forecasts are not a perfect science. And I've learned as a superintendent that you're only as good as your last decision, and you make the most informed decision that you possibly can for the safety of the students, and that's what guides us in our practices. So I'm saying that tonight because obviously we have very, very cold conditions coming in, there was a lot of snow on the ground, ground's going to be icy. We do believe that we were very fortunate today that it was a windy day that blew away a lot of the ice remnants on roadways, folks got out and salted in the municipalities. So we'll watch that closely, but it is a relatively extensive process, and I'd like to thank Pat LaGravena, Buildings and Grounds Group, Sean Voice is part of that, he got out and visited each school on the snow day as well, made sure we were up and running for all of our events over the weekend, so it was not an easy task. Couple other items, we continued with our executive student cabinet member right before the winter break, and for those of you who don't recall, these are six students, one from each high school, and you'll be meeting them shortly because they'll be presenting at our board meetings. And Dr. Hazel and I have been working with these students over the past couple of months to really get a bird's eye view of what's happening in the schools, talk to students who've assumed some leadership roles, have them help draft our constitution, our process to involve more students in that process. And I think that it's one of the meetings that I look forward to the most each month. These students are terrific, they're passionate about our schools, and we've had some wonderful, honest dialogue about our schools and what's great about them, how we can improve them. These individuals have gone back to their principals and met with them about our conversations, and it's been a wonderful extension of my opportunities to meet with students and Dr. Hazel as well. So that work continued since the last meeting and just prior to the holiday break, and I'm looking forward to, we were going to have one of those students present this evening, but we felt with the snow day on Friday and the rush to return to school that it was unfair to put him in that position to come out and be prepared, and we didn't want it to be a stressful endeavor, we wanted it to be a fun endeavor for the students and meaningful. Couple other items, we are continuing with our Marzano training, we've scheduled more expansive training for February. Folks laugh in the audience, so we've had quite a bit of training, and this is part and parcel with the new teacher evaluation system. We did also move forward with the leadership model component of that, that's with the central office administrators. I've begun the process of evaluating the principals under the new model. It's actually, I find it well done, you can collaborate electronically in a very, very meaningful way to supplement your firsthand observations of what's happening in a building. So the way the process works is I send an invitation to the building principals with specific components within the evaluation model, and then the principal has to upload supporting documentation of what they've done, and sort of a brief narrative, talk about how that work aligns to the building and the district goals. Then I'm able to come in and have a conference off of that with the specific information. So it's, I find it much more rigorous than some of the previous administrative tools that you might have had to perform an evaluation. I think that it focuses us on the very important component of making sure that we're being attentive to our specific building deficiencies, that our work is aligned at the building and the district level, that that's a clean and crisp match, and that work is really just begun in earnest, because we spent so much time in the first part of the year making sure that we got the teacher evaluation component right, that we're now turning our attention to the administrative end of that, obviously in full compliance with the state, I believe far ahead of the curve of what's happening throughout most of the state. Finally, and again, it's been quiet, we're just back in school, but you know, we do have a new board agenda format, we've migrated to a platform known as Board Docs. I think that it will allow us to ultimately be completely electronic, we won't need the cumbersome paper copies. Usually this binder is filled with all sorts of documentation, and it's all right here now, so you know, Sean's office, Sean Voice's office was responsible for that, but Christine Colavito, his administrative assistant, was really, ran point on that project, and I think the public will find it much easier to navigate our agenda online as well. So, thank you.
Board reports.
Can I go back? Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Saturday night, I was at a soccer game, and these five parents, and this is, it's K through 8 in Marlboro that they were talking about, none of them have kids in our district, but they were really talking about Common Core and how it was such a big issue with K through 8. My question is, with respect to Common Core, have you had any dealings with any parents in the district regarding it and big complaints that they've had?
Not really, but I'll preface that with why. You know, I think so, it's funny, because as I walked in this evening, I asked Mr. Moore to take a look at an article that appeared in the Wall Street Journal today, a very strident anti-C common core article. We've, and I think the last time we had a general question about the Common Core took me 11 minutes to answer it, so bear with me, Mr. Messinger. I believe that the Common Core has become a hot-button political issue in the nation, and particularly, it hasn't hit New Jersey as it has some other states at this point in time, but it's coming. And I think that one of the more significant reasons why there's been such a strong backlash, well, there's the philosophical debate over federal and local control, right, so you sort of have that hanging out there. But more importantly, I believe that folks have confused standardized test with standards. So folks are really revolting against the testing that's following the Common Core. And I've been up here publicly saying I'm skeptical of some of that as well, that we are rushing to develop all of these assessments aligned to the Common Core, almost ahead of the Common Core itself, and I think that that's causing some significant angst amongst the school community and the general public. I do believe, we have made it a point here, and I'll give you the perfect example, we, our CNI office was just, is sort of blogging about the Common Core and taking some of the Common Core standards and putting that in a real-world application for the public and putting it out there, so if I'm a parent, I could read about that standard and why that standard may benefit me as a student and being college and career ready. I think that we've been well out in front of our curriculum writing process in terms of how we've integrated the Common Core into what we already do, so we've owned the Common Core rather than the Common Core owning us. I think a number of districts are probably finding themselves sort of beholden to what the Common Core tells them within their course curricula, curriculum. And I think that we have for a few years now been actively getting out in front of our curriculum revision process to make sure, and it was a big part of the strategic plan, to make sure that we develop a course curriculum that is reflective of what we value here at the district that meets the standards of the Common Core. So the Common Core isn't driving us, I think it's helping to crystallize some things for us certainly. I think if you took the Common Core at face value and looked at all of the standards on a K-12 spectrum of math and language arts, it's overwhelming. You know, and I say that as a parent, but I think as an administrative team, we've been carefully making meaning within each one of our core disciplines around that for several years now. So we don't feel the angst here because I feel that we're out in front of it, is the short answer, and Dr. Hazel, if you want to embellish that in any way.
I think also, the goal for our district is for each student to reach their full academic potential. So our focus has been, in the past and as we move forward, on the individual. So we're putting a lot of practices and action teams together to assist teachers, we're engaging them in professional development activities. We are now engaging in different action teams with teachers and administrators. So again, we want to get to the core, we want to get to that particular individual, whatever the student's strengths or weaknesses are, we want our teachers to have the toolbox and the kit in order to be successful with the students so that they can reach their full potential with the Common Core. And we've been working on that for the past few years, we have a number of initiatives that are actively going on this school year. I know Mr. Moses was present when we were training our teachers with our PLC model and our professional learning communities with groups of teachers and administrators. We're working with our in-class resource program. So again, it's all about meeting the needs of individual students and being able to kind of laser lock on what the need is, so students can move on that continuum and be successful with Common Core.
But you know, I think more importantly, Michael, what's happening in some other states is the testing is ahead of where we are. So folks have been sort of hit in the face with these new tests, and they've seen some precipitous drops in student achievement in terms of how well they may have previously performed. New York State's a perfect example, Kentucky's a perfect example, Florida's an example. So they're basically a year ahead of us in the process. We haven't crossed the threshold of PARC, which is our new testing system, which we're going to field test as a state at the end of March this year. You know, I think that, you know, I had a conversation the other day with an administrative official, and they asked me my perspective on, they said, why are you always so strident in some of your writings about standardized testing, and why do you take the stance that you do? And I think it's because what happens when you let something like the Common Core drive your district, you don't have any other barometers of student success, you cloud out everything else except the test scores. And I think that our strategic plan very eloquently speaks to other avenues of success that we recognize aside from success on a standardized test score. That's important, that's an important step to other success, but we, you know, we've been very clear on how we've gone about our curriculum development, our professional development, our teacher training, our administrative training on evaluative processes, to make sure that we're focused on improving instructional practice, improving student outcomes, and a whole range of areas. And so I don't want to say that the Common Core's been, you know, very clearly present in that process, but it hasn't driven our work in the district, it's supplemented our work, and I think enriched the work that we do, and we've used it as a resource rather than something that we're reliant upon to tell us what we need to do. So I think that's why the angst hasn't been here. That's my story.
Any other questions? Next we have public participation, and we have one name.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate the newly elected representative, and also to Mr. Heshi Moses and Mrs. Sutera for being the president and vice president. to Mr. Heshy Moses and Mrs. Sutera for being the president and vice president. I went through the website, the agenda, and like what Mr. Sampson said before, that we will now electronically be put in the website, you know, like no more paper. I just have a little thing about that because there are people who don't have computers, or there are people who have no computer skills. I think, you don't have to print too many of these, but I think you should probably provide some here.
Absolutely.
It is always the policy of this board to put all the items in the agenda as one, in all vote as one item. And it's very important for the public to follow me, okay? Thinking that, oh, I read that on the website. I can really follow it because you block everything into one, and they convert. And that's a bit difficult for those people who are not accustomed to see you here. So, you know, I'm not printing too many because you can see not too many people at the council meeting, but to deny the public of any printed agenda is a little bit difficult, okay? Because like I said, there are a lot of people who have no access to it.
We will have, always have printed copies. Absolutely. We agree with you on that one.
Also, I noticed here on the website again, that we will be approving deals to be paid for $6 million, almost $6 million, 20,000. But now, you know, Mr. Sampson, you were appointed here. I have been asking that, to print that, to put that in the website, all the deals to be approved, because you normally post that on Friday, and that will give the public ample time to review and write down the questions that they have to ask the board so that we can ask the question before they formally vote. Now, I noticed that there's no more printout of the bills to be approved, only one figure here. We're talking about, I thought after we had that review by the state department, I thought we would be more transparent to the public. But like I said, for so many years, even before you came in, Mr. Sampson, I've been asking the producer, Mr. Sutera, to please print that, put that on the website. Now, everything is on the website. Now, how about putting a bill on the website? So, I myself, I would speak for myself, I would have the chance to review it, take down the questions I have, really pay your attention, that way you can answer my questions before the board approves it. I don't even know, not undermining the board members, but I don't even know whether you have the time to review all those bills, considering we are approving $6 million, 20,000 or more, or sometimes more than that. I don't know whether the board members, I know you all do see, that you have a chance to even review that. So, I really would appreciate that. It's been so many years that I've been asking, but now it is your decision to put everything on the website? I would appreciate to see the breakdown. I hope Mr. Boyce will not deny any of that after all these years, okay? Because she will have somebody who puts everything out. Another thing, I believe the IB is now being implemented or is in full implementation now. I hope that Mr. Jeff and Moore will do an update on a monthly basis as to where we are, and this, I guess this is so important, I mean, I commend this district for implementing that, but I think we do have some sort of update from time to time, especially would be nice on a monthly basis so we know where we are at this. And one more quickly, Mr. Sampson, unfortunately, I've been reading on that. I'm still confused myself. But are we obligated by the Department of Education or by the Department that we speak to them or we utilize or adopt the core curriculum?
Yeah. What ended up happening is, as part of the waiver from No Child Left Behind, a number of states agreed to say, "We will do A, B, and C in order to get out from under the requirements of No Child Left Behind," which was reaching the threshold of requiring 100% proficiency at all grade levels. New Jersey, the Department of Education in New Jersey was one of the states that signed on to that waiver and committed statewide to the Common Core. So, we've been mandated to implement that.
Okay. Correctly, I want, are we fully implementing the program yet or no?
No.
Okay. Before you do that, is there any way you can educate the public? Like I said, I read from time to time whatever information I can get, but I'm not an educator to fully absorb what it's all about. I can understand, but not the full implication of the core curriculum. So, before the district adopts it, is there any way whoever's in charge to give a sort of presentation to the public that we can easily absorb what it's all about? Is that possible?
Yes and no. It's possible, and we will certainly provide updates on where we're at. It's overwhelming when you talk about the scope of what the Common Core means and if you think every core discipline and what that means by grade level. I think we have a nice start, if you, under our curriculum tab, with some of the things that we've written about as a school district, that we've put out there already, and for lack of a better term, as parent-friendly as we can be. So, I think we do have a lot of that information on our website under the curriculum department. I think if you look at our curriculum documents that are online, you can see how those are different. If you looked at the adoption date and what they look like versus documents from a few years back, and that sort of tells the tale of what we're doing. But certainly, we'll provide public updates. I mean, we have a curriculum committee here. We do give updates over what occurs in that committee and the presentations, you know, that maybe give, for instance, you know, there was an IB update, a pretty extensive IB update a couple of months back about where we were at with the process that was reported out. So, the short answer, Mr. Close, is yes, but it's chunks of a much larger process.
I understand that. You can, like you said, I'm illegal, so please, we the public, we want to understand. We're not, I'm not an educator. I would appreciate anything that can be done with the public.
It's a point well taken. I think it was maybe a year and a half ago, we did do sort of a global overview of the Common Core, maybe it was two years ago, as we were moving forward. So, point well taken.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I say something about the IB program?
Mrs. Close, the IB program is a standing agenda topic for the curriculum committee. So, every time we have convened that committee, I report on the IB progress. We just didn't have a meeting in December.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gates, if you're interested, would be nice. Thank you.
Just a point of information for the board. The reference to item G3 for approval of payment of claims, as you know, each month there's two types of payments of claims. There's a bills list for payments to vendors, and then there's payroll, which is also approved on a monthly basis. There is no bills list on this agenda. The number that is included on the agenda is noted as payroll. So, there is no bills list.
Is that possible, then, Mr. Boris, next time? That this will be printed to the website?
I'm sorry. The board president wants to meet in here.
Are we talking, I'm sorry.
He does that.
Okay. Take the agenda, which is F through I, and let's take that in one shot.
Before you do, I have something.
And Mr. Boyce, some amendments.
I can go now.
You can go now, Mr. Boyce.
Okay. As Mr. Sampson noted, that we're getting our legs under us with the new agenda platform. So, I hope you'll be patient with us as we work our way through that. We do have some changes and additions to tonight's agenda in the back. You will find a yellow piece of paper with references on it, and those references have since changed. So, if I could just call your attention, H1, H3, and H4 is now F1, F3, and F5, as noted on your original agenda. The titles, the headings do match up though, so you should move through that fine. I also have an additional item. Let me do a correction first on H, on the actual H, Education Programs, item number five, Authorization to Submit for 2014 ESEA Grant Amendment. To amend, I had included, I picked the wrong number, and I included the wrong number. So, if I could amend the Title I amount from $6,280, it's $19,522. I hope you can make that note. And also, an additional item, which we'll put as H6. It reads as follows, "Resolved by the board upon recommendation of the superintendent to conditionally adopt and approve the settlement agreement and general release for student number 1420119 on file in the board office." We'll make that H6. So, with those changes, Mr. Moses.
Okay. Giving a motion.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Acetola.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mrs. Canario.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hauser.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavine.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera.
Yes.
Mr. Mazik.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes. Now for a special announcement.
So, just a, one of the appointments this evening is to name Ms. Shayna Howell as the new Director of Guidance and Operations. And Shayna, if you can stand up for a moment. Shayna's currently the Assistant Principal of Marlboro High School, but over the past several years, she's been very, very involved with a number of district initiatives, from the new teacher evaluation process to our safety and security protocol to, she's one of the folks in the buildings that when we really need some assistance, we've leaned on for a couple of years. And she's a logical choice to move over to the central administration and I think complement our team here in really profound ways. And I've said it before, I'm fortunate here at the Freehold Regional High School District. I've been in five districts in my career. I've been in every administrative position you can hold, and this place oozes talent. And it's wonderful to come to work in a place like that. And I think that Shayna will be a wonderful addition to our team. So, all the best, Ms. Howell.
I'd like to add a small comment, not as the board president, but as a past teacher in the district. There was a time here where Pine Street was not a people-friendly place, not seen by many of the teachers as a place where you could come and people knew how to treat you with, let's just say, healthy interpersonal skills. And I'm just really happy that Shayna is joining Pine Street and adding another friendly face, someone who knows how to treat people. So, congratulations, Shayna.
I'd just like to note that we no longer call it Pine Street. It is the central administration.
I'm sorry.
I respectfully request that we are referred to as the central administration.
Well, since I no longer teach here, that term just remains in my frontal lobe.
Full business.
Full business news.
Jesus, what's wrong with him tonight?
New business. New business.
We have a motion to.
So.
A motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So shall you say, so shall it be written. Thank you for coming.